I call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. May I have a motion to certify closed session, please? Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening at the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Thank you, Ms. Onby, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. It is great to hear you, I can hear you now, this is wonderful, thank you, whoever was responsible for that, thank you, Ronnie. Okay, the next is the pledge of allegiance, and tonight, we have from Lois Hornsby Middle School Veronica Armstrong, who's from 8th grade, Cannon John, also from 8th grade, and Tate Lee, also 8th grade, can you all come up and lead us in the pledge, please? Whenever you're ready.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Onby.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move approval agendas presented.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. The agenda is approved, next on the agenda is announcements and superintendent's reports, Dr. Heron?
Good evening, Madam Chair, to help our students begin with the end in mind, many of our elementary school counselors have organized college campus tours for 5th grade classes this year. Laurel Lane's Elementary School's 5th grade students visited Christopher Newport University recently, where they took a tour of the campus, checked out dorm rooms, and even had the opportunity to eat in the dining hall. The trip was funded in part by a $700 Target field trip grant and coordinated by Laurel Lane School Counselor Amy Meister. Academic and career planning is a K-12 initiative in WJCC schools, and this is just one way we are helping our students learn about options for their futures. Congratulations to Hornsby Middle School student Peter Rodovich for winning a nationwide German spelling and vocabulary competition. Competing against 555 other middle and high school German students, Peter started preparing for this competition last December by memorizing the meaning and spelling of nearly 1,000 words. Peter worked through all 50 rounds of the competition in just two and a half hours, literally setting a record for the competition. Three Berkeley Middle School students also placed in this competition in Spanish, Daniel Pham placed 2nd, and Numai placed 10th, and Larissa Smart placed 9th in German. Congratulations to all of these students. CBB blatant teacher Kellyanne Kelly was recently named as the local and district smart mayor veterans of foreign wars, national citizenship, education teacher of the year. The contest recognizes exceptional teachers for their commitment to teaching citizenship, congratulations to Ms. Kelly. And finally, Jamestown High School teacher Molly Sandline has been selected to attend a summer institute at Duke University on dimensions of the Middle East, foundations, cultures, and geopolitics. Sandline was selected for this all expenses paid professional development opportunity by Duke University's Islamic Studies and Middle East Studies Centers and the Guitar Foundation International. Ms. Sandline is a National Board Certified Teacher and a leader on the Jamestown High staff, congratulations, Pam. These are all of the announcements I have this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, does anyone have anything else? Just Dr. Heron, not to put you on the spot, but today I believe you were presenter in a statewide conference or session about equity?
I took part in a superintendent's and board member panel on the subject of equity, it was Equity Hot Topic Conference with the Virginia School Board Association, so that was a lot of fun taking part in that.
Thank you for doing that and sharing what you know about the topic with the rest of Virginia. That brings us next to board recognitions.
Good evening, Madam Chair again, we have a number of individuals to recognize tonight, let's begin by congratulating the Jamestown Girls Swim Team for being named the 2017-18 VHSL 4A Girls State Champions. This is the team's 5th consecutive year earning this title. I'd like to invite head coach Molly Sandline to come down to the podium to announce the team members. Students, as your name is called, please come forward and remain for a group photograph.
Ashley Adams, Hallie Anderson, Shay Bruski, Catherine Burrows, Kaylee Carvahal, Savannah Champagne, Rebecca Dunkuski, Haley Downer, Katie Duff, Katrina Early, Victoria Hardy, Brooke Harlow, Kylie Johnson, Abby Larson. Abby Larson was also the individual state champion in the 50 freestyle and the 100 freestyle. Audrey Lurs, Madeline Lurs, Rory Meadows, Madison Nuremberg, Caitlin Pegram, Midori Pitts, Abby Polansky, Emma Rice, Carter Catherine Roulet, Lily Seines, Anna Song, Angelique Voe, Meredith White, Bridget Wilson, and Emily Zuniga.
Awesome job, ladies, well done. Four members of the Lafayette Girls Swim Team were named 4A State Champions for the 200 medley relay. Students, as your name is called, please join us up front to receive your certificate and remain for a group photograph. Colby Hurt, also 200 individual medley. Sophia Long. Grace Olson. And Kelly Shiza. Congratulations to our coach as well. The All Virginia Elementary Chorus provides an opportunity for students across the state to work with a master conductor, perform a varied repertoire of quality choral literature, and increase their knowledge of vocal skills. Seven Clara Bird Baker choir students were selected to participate in this outstanding statewide event. I'd like to ask CBB music teacher Jason Kreiner to come to the podium to announce the CBB students. Mr. Kreiner is also the CBB Teacher of the Year this year if I remember from last year, last week.
Lee Jobs, Brandon Dubois, Addison Zekman, Jay Saw Memes, and Maya Blackhurst. We have two that were not able to be with us tonight, Sasha Ryan Polk and Brighter Thompson.
The Center for Digital Education has just awarded WJCC Schools Technology Department with the Digital Schools District Survey Award for their outstanding work investing in tools for the next generation of digital learners. This national award recognizes school districts and school boards that exhibit exemplary use of technology in education, as well as transparency and efficiency in operations. The top 10 rankings are awarded to the school divisions that most fully implement technology benchmarks in the evolution of digital education. Brian Landers has already joined us up front to receive the award for the work of the Technology Department, thank you very much indeed, Mr. Landers. WJCC's support positions are an integral part of the school division's success. This evening, we are honored to recognize these excellent staff through the Support Employee of the Year recognition program. One support employee from each school and non-based department was selected by their peers and colleagues. We appreciate these employees' commitment to our schools, departments, and most importantly, to our students. Employees, as your name is called, please come up front and be recognized and remain until all employees have been named. From bright beginnings, Support Employee of the Year, Tracy Dumpley. Clara Bird Baker, Support Employee of the Year, Patty Trubenbach. BJ Montague, Support Employee of the Year, Jennifer Damian. Jay Blain Blatton, Support Employee of the Year, Sarah Pittman. James River, Support Employee of the Year, Holly Blaken. Laurel Lane, Support Employee of the Year, Candace Bresnahan. Matoka, Support Employee of the Year, Linda Jakot. Mathewellay, Support Employee of the Year, Elizabeth Wells. Norge, Support Employee of the Year, Barbara Tuie. Stonehouse, Employee of the Year, Lori Hudson. Berkeley, Support Employee of the Year, Visa Carter. Lois S. Hornsby, Support Employee of the Year, Gwendolyn Gaines. Tuanau, Support Employee of the Year, William Quintana. Jamestown, Support Employee of the Year, David Greenhy. Lafayette, Support Employee of the Year, William Capers. Warhill, Support Employee of the Year, Ethel White. Central Office, Support Employee of the Year, Caitlin Wesenant. Operations, Support Employee of the Year, Tammy Flars. Technology, Support Employee of the Year, Ann Skipper. And Transportation, Support Employee of the Year, Billy Estes. Rhonda, you need to get on the front.
All right, if you would just make sure that your face is between two heads, that would be great. There you go. All right, and look up at Ronnie and all these other people, please.
Oh, oh, it's just because there's too much, hey Owen, it's just because there's too much Andy and noise.
Unruly bunch, they are.
Thank you.
We are very fortunate to have such wonderful employees in WJCC schools and want to thank everybody again for the incredible work that they do. Obviously, Madam Chair, that concludes our recognitions this evening, and we look forward to more in May, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, that brings us next to school spotlight, Lois Hornsby, would you like to introduce the presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce Dr. Ellison from Hornsby Middle School who's going to introduce their school spotlight, thank you, Dr. Ellison.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Heron. Hornsby Middle School is pleased and proud to present the April School Spotlight focusing in on the HAWK News.
HAWK News is a weekly video newscast created by and presented by our students each week showcasing all the amazing things we do at Hornsby.
I'm Tate.
I'm Ronnie.
And I'm Cannon.
And we're the HAWK Newscasters.
We have a compilation video that captures what Hornsby is all about. Hornsby welcomes new students through orientations and the flight crew, which is where two students in each class who make new, share new students has someone in each class that they can ask questions.
Hornsby believes in and recognizes our students through pep rallies, brag boards, soaring hawks, positive referrals, and shout-outs. Hornsby also has engaging and collaborative student-centered learning.
Hornsby students are talented, fun, and care about the community. This includes service classes such as peer helpers and B Crew, and students elected causes like a food drive and building walls in sedan.
I'm Nikki.
I'm Abby.
I'm Erin.
And I'm Hannah.
And this is your HAWK News.
Welcome back Hawks, it's so good to have you back. The 2017 to 2018 school year has officially begun. It looks like everyone has adjusted well to their new grade level.
And by this time, everyone should be enjoying their one-to-one laptops. It's so nice to have a dependable laptop to complete all your schoolwork.
A special welcome to the 6th grade Hawks, you definitely look like you have made Hornsby your home. Partly with that, about two weeks ago, you went through your orientation, remember that?
It's time for the soaring hawks.
Wait, what?
I said it's time for the soaring hawks.
Yeah, I know what you said. Don't you think there are students in our school who don't have any idea what you're talking about?
You may be right, especially new students and sixth graders.
You think we should tell them?
I have a better idea. They should tell them. Watch this.
What does it take to be a soaring hawk?
A soaring hawk is a student that has excellent grades in all four of their core classes and excellent behavior in all their four classes. It has to be agreed upon by all four of their core teachers.
Now that you know what a soaring hawk is, you too can be a soaring hawk. Shout out to anyone. Hornsby is a great school to be in, and everyone deserves a shout-out. Here are the HAWK shout-outs for this week.
And now, a special treat from Miss Moore's students who have recorded a song about the European explorers. Here they are.
I say crab, then you say eagle, then we're a goner. It's for four states. We can't play, play, miss land, it's for France. The song's playing for France.
All we want is independence, because in Parliament we have no attendance. We don't want to be taxed for the war we fought. We had no issues except for the freedom we sought. So against these awful rules, we protest, and all your hard laws, we detest.
You can't have independence. You're still part of England. But I want you to know, I have been thinking, if you were on your own, just the colonies, you would die out in large quantities. You think you can do it all on your own, but I am your ruler up on the throne.
This show, Little Women, is about a girl named Jo who tries to navigate through the issues that could be faced in the 1800s, and it's her surviving her issues with her sisters and her family by her side.
Wait, can I play Star Wars?
People are facing low income already in our community. How can Hornsby students help? Well, if each student donates $2, we will raise more than $1,800. What will happen at the pep rally? Well, students will use the coins they donate to vote for a teacher of their choice to get pied in the face at the pep rally. That sounds pretty hilarious, right?
Hello, Hawks. We hope everyone had a great weekend and is looking forward to next week, especially because it's Hornsby's Unity Week, and we can't wait to celebrate. Unity Week is all about kindness, acceptance, and inclusion, and standing together against bullying.
So get in the spirit and be a good character on Monday. Be positive on Tuesday for Orange on Wednesday. Be a team player on Thursday and a soaring hawk on Friday for a pep rally.
You did it.
We did it.
This was fun.
And we'll see you next week on the HAWK News.
Share some of the things that make Hornsby great.
Above all, Hornsby has heart.
Thank you all for your presentation. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Mr. Kelly?
I just, I thought that was wonderful. I appreciate you coming. Unity that must create to your school and the sense.
Well, all of our schools are wonderful, but Hornsby has a special place in my heart since my oldest, who's 21, opened Hornsby as an eighth grader, and I have a sixth grader there now and an eighth grader. So thanks for all that you do. Hornsby is a great, a great place, and I love that all of our students soar every day.
Thank you very much for coming here. It was wonderful to learn about the HAWK News, and hopefully I can be there one morning when you produce it. Is it, so it's once a week on the... Friday. Yeah, on, yeah, great. All right, well, I'll try to make it there Friday morning sometime soon so I can see it. Thank you. Thank you. Citizen comments, and we have two speaker cards this evening. Ms. Hummel, would you like to make some remarks?
Yes, because these two speakers need these remarks. This is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The Board is interested in hearing all comments fully and requests that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the Board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening and we appreciate your time. Thanks for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ruth Larson.
First of all, I was doing fine, even though it was an emotional night for me because it's my daughter's last recognition until the Hornsby, and it took me back to sixth grade real quick for both my girls. So I want to thank both of you, all of you, for having me speak this evening, and I can't get specific, but I'm gonna, I am gonna get a little specific, and I want to speak about swim and dive. And I don't come to you lightly because I realize that what I'm about to say is something that I'm gonna have to take responsibility for as we move ahead, but it's very important to me. And so earlier this evening, you recognized the Jamestown Swim Team that is led by Coach Sandley and Coach Wigan. And I specifically want to recognize Coach Sandley for just a moment, going back to 2004, '05, when she started coaching Jamestown Swim, and she has had four boys' state championships and six state championships for girls, along with numerous region, district, et cetera. She's also been the 2014 Mideast Region Coach of the Year for Boys Swim and Dive, 2015 Virginia State Coach of the Year Boys Swim and Dive, 2017 Mideast Region Coach of the Year Girls Swim and Dive. And so, as you can see, this has been a very successful program, and it's as well for Lafayette with Coach Baker and Warhill as they progressed as well. Last year, I wrote to you saying, before you add another sports team that being recognized, please remember those that you have. And so, as my daughter gets ready to exit what has been a very successful program, not in wins necessarily or only, but in what they've learned from Coach Sandley about character, and what they have had to deal with as far as facilities go. Because for years, they were practicing in a pool that did not allow them to dive in, and so it would be equivalent to, I know several of your, some of you have children that do soccer, volleyball, et cetera, so imagine practicing volleyball without a ball, or soccer without a goal. And so, this team, in spite of, and really, all three teams, in spite of being at a disadvantage, worked hard and were able to succeed. Thankfully, Wisk opened up a facility this year, and with the 757 Year-Round Swim Club's commitment to hold practice there, became a practice where two of our high schools were able to practice. But if we had not had that, Hampton University was where all of our home meets, which basically all the meets for the Bay River District were held. Oh, I'm on yellow already. And we lost that this year, and I don't know if we would have had Wisk, what we would have done. So I'm gonna run out of time, but I just ask you to please, let's work together and make sure that we provide proper facilities moving ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
Kim Hunley. Good evening. Kim Hunley, President of the WJCEA. So here's a scoop. I know you can't respond, but you have before you some ice cream trivia from Baskin Robbins, and just with a show of hands, do you know, is there any of you that know why there are 31 flavors? I'm just curious. Okay? Do you know the flavor of the ice cream named after one of the Beatles? The Beatles? No? Okay, so you have 31 facts there. I will be quizzing you next month, and I am going to report your results out in the Gazette. Just kidding. But, I'm just kidding. But our children are getting ready to go into testing. Our teachers are just preparing kids very well, and it can be a time of excitement, but also anxiety. So whatever you can do, just send up happy thoughts to them and prayers, if prayer is your thing, just so that, you know, these next days will be positive, because, you know, the saying, "Ice cream, you scream." Everybody's screaming for ice cream. We will have a big celebration, and I know that our students are gonna do well. But the reason why there is 31 flavors, it's for one flavor for each day of the month, even though some months are 30, there's 31. But starting now until the middle of May, you know, a lot of our children will be testing, so just keep that in mind, and I will get, my, yours is, it fell somewhere, but you know, I would never forget my fearless leader. So, but anyway, look over those facts and think about that, too, when you're looking at these things and trying to remember how difficult it is for some kids and how easy. Some of you will be able to do that like that. Some of you will need hands-on, you know, problem-based learning to get those facts across. So just think about that, and thank you so much for the meetings that are going across, strategic plan meeting, planning meetings. The budget is ready to come forth and back, and before you know it, it is gonna be summer, and we can relax. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. I think we may need a field trip to Baskin Robbins just so we can enhance our learning, get ready for next month. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. All right. Item 7.01, approval of minutes from the following meetings, March 16, 2018, March 20, 2018. 7.02, financial report and monthly bills and payroll for March 2018. 7.03, personnel actions as presented. 7.04, Resolution R1218, National Teacher Appreciation Week. 7.05, Resolution R1318, School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week. Item 7.06, Resolution R1418, National School Nurse Day. 7.07, Resolution R1518, Berkeley High School class of 1968. 7.08, revise and recode policy JIHA search and seizure to policy JFG search and seizure. 7.09, retire policy IIBE instructional television. 7.10, add new policy IGAK, Alternatives to Animal Dissection. 7.11, retire policy EGFA, Cellular and Personal Communication Services Telephone Usage. 7.12, revise policy IIBA/GAB, Acceptable Technology System Use Policy. 7.13, revise policy GBI, Staff Gifts and Solicitations. 7.14, review policy GBO, Virginia Retirement System. 7.15, review policy GCBCA, Employee Assistance Program, and 7.16, appointments to 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee. May I please have a motion? Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. You have a second, please.
Second.
Are there any comments? Mrs. Young, would you like to say anything?
I just want to congratulate the two people that have been selected to work on the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisor Advisory, Chris Moore and Mr. Schaefer. Both of these people have had a lot to do with CTE over the years, and they'll be a great asset, I believe, to that committee.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, with that, it's been moved, and the consent agenda's been moved and seconded. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Consent agenda passes. Before we move on to action items, I'd like to just express my appreciation to the two citizens who offered to serve on our advisory committee, and then I also would like to just thank staff for the information about the several resolutions that we passed today. It's nice to know that not only we're passing resolutions, but what the Division is doing in response to those resolutions, so thank you. All right, that brings us to 8.01, Local Special Education Plan and Title 6B Flow Through Funds. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of Special Education Plan, Annual Plan, and the Title 6B Flow Through Funds.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Motion passes. 8.02, Carl D. Perkins Grant. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the local plan and budget of CTE, the Carl D. Perkins Grant, for school year 2018 to 2019.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Take it.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Motion passes. 8.03, Middle School Refresh Laptop Purchase. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the purchase request for middle school 1.1 laptops from Lenovo in the amount of $326,436 through contract Virginia-140331-LEN.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Motion passes. 8.04, Laptop Protection Services Purchase. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve purchase requests for laptop protection services from Lenovo, Lenovo, in the amount of $116,640 through contract number VA-140331-LEN.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Motion passes. 8.05, James Blair Middle School Audio-Visual Systems Purchase. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the purchase request for classroom gym and auto-twim items to support James Blair Middle School in the amount of $370,947 through the Division Purchasing Contract Number 15-6784 with Optech.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Will you call the roll, Ms. Sersa, please?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Motion passes. 8.06, Award a Contract for Invitation for Bid Number 18-12166, Clara Birdbaker Elementary School Exterior Improvements. May I please have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we award a contract for invitation for bid 18-12166, Clara Birdbaker Elementary School Exterior Improvements to Eastern Waterproofing in the amount of $234,431.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, Mr. Schnipes is gonna speak to the fact that the amount that we're voting on is much less than the original cost of the on is much less than the original cost of the project, and give us some background on that.
Aye. Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members, Dr. Heron. As Dr. Heron mentioned, the original estimate from R R M M was in the amount of one point three million dollars to replace and to do some exterior masonry repairs. They relooked at the scope and pared it down to say that we do not need to replace all the exterior masonry. So, that is one reason, the largest reason why this is reduced in the amount of about one point one million dollars.
Any questions for Mr. Snipes on that?
That was the exact question I had. This is why the numbers are so different. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna ask Mr. Snipes to stay for the next one once we're ready. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, let us, any other questions or comments? It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. That brings us to eight point zero seven, Award a Contract for Invitation for Bid eighteen dash one two one one nine, Jamestown High School HVAC System Replacement. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move award a contract for invitation for bid eighteen dash one two one one nine, Jamestown High School HVA System Replacement to Warwick Mechanical in the amount of six million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand contingent upon budget approval.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Dr. Heron, Mr. Snipes?
Mr. Snipes is gonna provide some background, because there's quite a difference in the price on the budget in mind on this project as well.
That is correct. We asked our vendor who performed the original design why the cost estimate of five point six million, about five million, five hundred and eighty thousand was way under what the bid came in as. And when I say way, it's came in under about eight hundred thousand dollars less. His response, and I quote, is, "The design team is being informed by their equipment manufacturers that an increase in steel pricing is forcing them to raise their prices." So, when this was originally designed back in, we gave the design to them in October of last year, steel prices were not where they were. They were basing their, most of the time, their estimates are coming in now based on the fear that steel prices will rise.
Any questions for Mr. Snipes?
So, what's the difference between, again?
The budgeted amount was, that we have left in the budget is five million, five hundred and eighty thousand, and you are voting tonight to work mechanical in the amount of six million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand.
And that's contingent on?
It's contingent upon budget approval.
Where's the budget? Is that the rest of the capital numbers that we all talk about every year?
Ms. Barnes will come up and speak to that, but basically, we would be asking permission to use funds from other, leftover from other project to go towards this essential project. Obviously, in the one that Mr. Snipes just spoke, had spoken about just prior to this, we saved money, but in this one, it's much more, Ms. Barnes.
Good evening, Dr. Heron, Madam Chair, and other board members. Yes, that's true. We actually checked with the county and the city to see our balances that we have in other CIP projects. So, we'll have the remaining, and we'll request to use those funds for this project to make the difference.
So, that comes from the Board of Supervisors?
Sure.
It's not action upon of this body, it's action of the supervisors in the city?
Of course, this is in the fiscal year of two thousand nineteen, CIP, anyway. So, we've got to get that approved, and then we have to request use of the additional funds from previous projects.
That's our fund balance, right? Is that what we, yeah, okay.
This is common in time to allow the work to begin, but it's all contingent upon approval by our funding partners.
So, do we have a timeline for when that'll be approved?
They will approve their budget on May the eighth, and we can check with staff the day after.
So, Warwick Mechanical doesn't proceed until later, May ninth?
For how long is this price good?
Warwick Mechanical was informed by our purchasing that the money is good until July one, basically, because we'll be approving the budget at that. But, they will proceed as if their money is available. They understand there's lead times on certain items, so they are, they will wait until the notice of intent, but they will be able to do it if we are approved.
I assume steel prices are higher because of what's going on in the international?
They did not give a reason why. They just said they were hearing from their manufacturer that's forcing them to raise their prices on steel. They didn't give.
Does it work the other way, if all of a sudden steel prices drop, do?
Well, if you look at what we just did with Laurel Lane, you remember a couple of weeks ago, that budget came in two point four million. However, that bid came in at two point four million, however, our budget was four million dollars. So, we came in one point six million dollars less, but because you can make some assumptions there about what happened between the last two months, but.
Any other comments or questions? Moved and seconded. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to eight point zero eight, Award a Contract for Invitation for Bid eighteen dash one two one three six, Stonehouse Elementary School Bus Canopy Construction. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we award a contract for invitation for bid number eighteen dash one two one three six, Stonehouse Elementary School Bus Canopy Construction to David A. Nice Builders in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments from staff or questions for staff or comments from board members?
I will make the comment that we have talked with David Nice, and they, their original estimate was much higher than this. We've worked with them to pare that down. However, we will still have a canopy that is conducive to allowing the students in. Ms. White, the principal at Stonehouse, has agreed to the new design.
Questions or comments?
What did they do exactly to reduce the price?
They reduced, they reduced part of the square footage for the canopy from about four thousand eight hundred square feet to three thousand six hundred square feet. Cut it, to cut down on some of the price of the.
Anything else? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to board member comments. Dr. Beers, do you have anything to share tonight?
Sorry?
It's the board member comments. Do you have anything to comment on?
Oh, sorry. I was pulling up the comments that I was gonna make, just a minute. I'm starting to take notes as we, as we have. First of all, I would, I would very much like to congratulate our elementary, middle, and high school winners, students, our technology leader winner, all the employees of the year and additional staff. And I was very much impressed with the Hornsby Middle School presentation, and all I can really say is, "Go Hawks."
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I went to the Jamestown musical Big Fish last weekend, and as always, I'm very impressed with our, with our students at all three of the high schools, and I very much enjoyed that presentation. And they're always just amazing. And Lafayette's is this week. Lafayette's, what was? Mary Poppins, of course, right? So, I'm looking, I'm looking forward to that one as well. Last Friday night, I was, I was fortunate enough to attend the VFW Community Awards Night. Several members of our community were recognized there, firefighters and police officers, but we had several students who essay contests. Mr. Stone actually won the High School Teacher of the Year from Jamestown, and there were a couple of Boy Scouts there. So, that, I was very much impressed with that program and very thankful for the, for the VFW recognition of our students and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Young?
I just want to second the comments that Mr., Dr. Beers made about congratulating Mr. Landers. Thank you very much. I, I know it's largely through the efforts of our staff that so much is accomplished, so thank you very much, and I appreciate it very much. I wanna support, for the support employees, I'm, I don't think, no matter what we do, it's never enough, but I wanna congratulate the ones that were chosen for Employees of the Year. And I wanna give a specific shout-out to Mr. Stone for his production of Big Fish. I was totally impressed. The two male leads were outstanding, and if you didn't, if you didn't go, you missed it. And it's too, and it's very sad, really. You missed something that was totally amazing. And then, I wanna hope that you'll go see Mary Poppins, 'cause I'm looking forward to see how they're gonna make her fly away, with her umbrella. So, that's Wednesday through Saturday. The performances are at seven o'clock at night, and there's a matinee on Saturday at two. So, please plan on going, and if you're in our community, you will love it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Young. Mrs. Taylor?
Another quick congratulations to everyone who was recognized tonight. So many great things going on in our district, as evidenced by the large number of people that we're able to recognize, so that's always wonderful.
Ms. Hummel?
Hi. My other fellow board chair or board members said everything I was gonna say, but I would like to add that I appreciate the people who remain here to the bitter end with us. So, thank you all for still being in your seats and listening to our comments.
Ms. Hummel, Ms. Onby?
Yes, I had an opportunity to attend the parent forum for the Strategic Plan last Wednesday at Jamestown, and appreciate the community's thoughtful input in that process. Also, attended a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting last Thursday, where the committee is looking forward to serving as an advocate for K-12, in particular with regard to educating our community about the needs of students with disabilities and the need for funding at the local, state, and federal level. They're hoping to be able to utilize Peach Jar more, more, so that they can share resources to families, but also folks within the Division about special educational activities and resources for families. And they also have discovered that while there is a Facebook page that was created years ago, they don't have access to it. So, they need to dismantle that Facebook page, will create a new Facebook page, again, in efforts to bring awareness to the Special Education Advisory Committee. And so, between now and next month, they will begin working on the annual report to our board on the needs for special education services in the Division. I, too, attended Big Fish, and it was, it was the bomb. It's great. It was phenomenal. And I'm looking forward just to Mary Poppins, and wanna congratulate all of our support staff, and I'm glad that we have an opportunity to applaud them, so. And Mr. Landers, Mr. Landers as well. Thank you.
I wanted to share that Dr. Heron and Mr. Baker and I and Ronnie went around to the three schools, elementary, middle, and high, to celebrate those Level Teacher of the Year, and that was really fun to walk around. You're quite a spectacle walking around with balloons. So, yeah, so it was really a fun thing, and I'm looking forward to the, to the reception coming up. And then, I also wanted to thank Ms. Larson for her remarks, and I will take them to heart, but she is right that they will come back to her at some point, because we will, you know, if that's something that Dr. Heron's team, as they look at long-range planning for facilities, may indeed be part of that. And I also wanted to take a few moments, I'm sorry, I know everybody wants to get out of here, but I think this is pretty important, so I wanna talk a few minutes about funding. I wanted to do this at the last meeting, but because the state budget was in flux, it's kind of a difficult thing and a complicated thing to talk about, but, but I think it's important. And I'd like to thank City Council for their commitment to funding two full-time SROs at James Blair and at Berkeley. They stated that they would, they would figure that out in their budget next year, so I'm grateful for that. I also would like to thank interim County Administrator Bill Porter for recommending to his board that they fully fund Dr. Heron's proposed WJCC operating budget. This year's proposal included a much-needed increase in pay for our most important asset, our employees, and it was a significant increase this year, and I'm pleased and grateful that Mr. Porter concurred with Dr. Heron on the budget, and I hope that our funding localities consider his recommendation favorably. Additionally, his recommended fiscal year nineteen CIP budget includes investing in more security measures in our schools, for which I am also grateful. But, in addition to thanking the localities for their support of public education, I'd like to ask for help from my colleagues and from the citizens of this community. It's the school board's job to ensure adequate resources in support of public education, and it's arguably one of our most important jobs. We are charged with securing those resources during challenging times. And at the joint meeting last month, our guest speaker, Mr. Regenbaugh, clearly demonstrated that the state is not funding public education appropriately. He also clearly demonstrated that local revenue is not keeping pace with local population growth. The situation is not sustainable, and something's got to give. The General Assembly recently enacted legis, or passed legislation that will increase revenue significantly in Jame City County. Senator Norman introduced the legislation under the mantra of self-help at the local level, because the state is not sufficiently supporting the localities. The new legislation will generate revenue locally that we can spend locally, and in my view, this community should invest the new revenue in support of education. There is no shortage of thoughtful and justifiable ways the community can invest in education. We can invest in much-needed elementary and high school classroom space. We could invest in our staff by continuing to support higher pay in an era of teacher shortages. We could hire more staff to lower class size. We can invest in more innovative programs, programs that we've already had to adjust next year because of resources. And we could invest in workforce housing that would allow our employees to live in the community they so ably serve. With that in mind, the Jame City County Board of Supervisors needs to hear from you if you want them to invest the new revenue in education. They need to hear from individuals and organizations that support education as part of their mission. They need to hear that it's more important to invest in education than to lower the property tax rate. I will reach out to the Education Association to ask them to share this message with their members. members. I will reach out to the PTAs to ask them to advocate for funding education, not only this year, but in the future. We heard from many citizens during the redistricting process who were upset that our high schools were so full. This is an opportunity for them to share their thoughts with the Board of Supervisors, to ask them to spend this new additional revenue on educational infrastructure instead of a tax decrease. I will contact those citizens as well. Everyone who cares about education in this community knows this Division needs more resources in order to continue our good work, and I encourage everyone who believes that to please let your elected leaders know how you feel. We have been, been given a once-in-a-generation opportunity by the General Assembly to recover from the recession. We have been given the opportunity for self-help that we so desperately need. It is too important to not act. I encourage you to share your thoughts with your elected officials.